Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. We are calling to order this afternoon's city council meeting. It is August 23, 2022 at 1:00 p.m. At this time, city council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, as well as personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Government Code. Once we are concluded with our executive session, we will then come back and we will resume the regular city council meeting at 2:00 p.m. So we are in recess until that time. All right, good afternoon. It is 2:17 on August 23, 2022. We are back from executive session, and we have adjourned from executive session, and we are reconvening for our regular city council meeting. We will start with ceremonial items. We have Pastor Clay Thomas with Live Oak Community Church. He's the worship pastor there. We have him to give our invocation today. If everybody will please rise, Pastor, if you'll come forward, and then we'll follow that with our pledges.
Father, I thank you for waking us up this morning, giving us breath, giving us life. God, we're living in your grace as we pray together and gather together, and so we're thankful for that and we're grateful. God, there are some incredible leaders in this room, and I just pray your blessing over them, over their families. I pray for this room to be filled with your presence and for your spirit to guide and to lead. I pray for an increase in discernment and wisdom as challenging decisions have to be made, and I pray for your guidance over this city and that your glory is manifested here in this place. God, we love you, we're thankful for you. We pray for blessing over our city and over these leaders. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Do please join me in the pledge to the United States flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 3. This is citizen comments. According to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular city council meeting may do so. They shall complete a sign-up form provided no later than 2:00 p.m., and they will have the opportunity to make citizen comments to express a position on agenda items. You will, as you come forward, please state your name and your address, and as a reminder, you will have three minutes. Now, I will say this, I noticed that one of the parties signed up is Mr. Don Bybee. Mr. Bybee, you showed to be speaking regarding Agenda Item 5.2, and I'll let you know that that Agenda item has been pulled, and it is not going to be on the council agenda today. You are still more than welcome to make a statement if you choose, but that item is not going to be considered today.
I did hear that, and you chose to speak anyway because I wasn't sure where that could be brought back up again.
Mr. Weaver, if that is not on an agenda item, is it all right if we let Mr. Bybee proceed?
Sure, you can. And the applicant withdrew that zone case?
Correct.
So in answer to his question, it would be up to the applicant as to whether they ever pursued it again.
It would be up to the applicant whether or not they ever pursued this again in the future. So if you'd like to, if you would like to go ahead and speak, you're welcome to. You also may choose to withdraw that.
I think I can get it in in three minutes.
All right, come on forward.
Oh, you mean right now?
You're up. You're not on deck. I mean, you're better up.
Right now, it's going to take four.
Mr. Wheatley, you're on deck.
Okay. No, the reason I chose to speak again is because, you know, I brought this up at the zoning meeting, was distraught that I was even having to do that because, you know, when this bar closed down, we were ecstatic. But when I read this staff report that I knew went to the city council, I was still distraught because I know that the east of us, light manufacturing, south, two-family district, the north, a zoned heavy manufacturing district. So this one little strip is C4, and because it's C4, then that's why we would have to deal with the specific use of a bar in the first place. But what our problem was on this is we had major, over the years, which you, I did hand out the stuff on that, you do have the things in front of you, the things we dealt with with that bar that was there. And I won't even say it's a problem of anyone else's except in the area, a bar like that, if it's allowed to have a bar in a place like that, that's very secluded, dark, it's a horrible place for a bar. I would hope that the planning and zoning committees, when they look at stuff like that, they would look at that and say, you know, that's just not the best place for a bar. Yes, it may have been there a long time, but it's not now. But we had a lot of, and even the bar has no windows on it, so the problems Weaver's having, they don't even know what's going on. When our guys drive up, that's when they find out. That was the last one. But the other thing is, again, all this goes back to planning and zoning. When I started doing some research on it, basically for a holder of any Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission permit, from what I read, I'm under the understanding that that bar has to have one space for every 50 square feet of gross space. That would mean that place would have to have 50 parking spaces. It has like 10 right now. Did the planning and zoning miss that? The other thing was separation. All Texas alcoholic beverage permits require any bar to shall be located a minimum of 200 feet from any residential zoned property. It's not 200 feet from any zoned residential property, but we were going to approve it anyway. So, you know, that to me was one problem. And the last one, the thing we dealt with, I'd never heard this before, and I hope it's either correct, or this would be what I'd end with. This was a question I have to the city council. I read this, and I was like, wow, we could have done this when we were having problems? It says, "In addition to general code enforcement rights," because we were told that was just code enforcement and planning and zoning. Well, it says nothing to do with planning and zoning, that's code enforcement. We can't deal with planning, you know, code enforcement. But it said, "In addition to general code enforcement rights, the mayor, a city council member, chief of police, city marshal, or city attorney may file a protest with the TABC requesting that a bar's license or permit be suspended."
Thank you, Mr. Bybee.
I would have hoped that was true.
Appreciate you very much. All right, Mr. Wheatley?
Jordan Wheatley, 39, 13, 114th Street, Suite 7, here in Lubbock. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, for your time today. Speaking on Item 7.14 today, I'm here representing the West Texas Home Builder Association, the Lubbock Apartment Association, the Lubbock Association of Realtors, and the Chamber of Commerce. Together, we represent over 5,000 member businesses here in Lubbock. We just want to still voice our support for the current impact fee program as adopted in October of 2020. We still are in favor of that program, even though it's in its infancy right now. We still are in favor of what we agreed upon then in those rates. What you'll see today in your report is the first full collection for June 2022. Keep in mind, that's the first full collection of impact fees that were not grandfathered in by any property. So you have one month of report right now, and then you've got July and half of August that are coming. So just keep in mind, we've just started to get a look at this program. We're just now starting to get used to it. We're just now into the, getting into it. So we are in favor of maintaining these rates and this program and seeing how it goes. We're also excited about seeing some projects come from this program. We want to see them happen. We want to see projects happen, especially roadway projects. So we appreciate y'all and letting us visit with you guys leading up to this meeting. And a different subject, our West Texas Home Builder Association, we meet as a liaison committee with city staff monthly on different issues before they even get up to the top floor, and it has been a very, very good and productive relationship that we have. We get lots of problems done, lots of solutions. It's been a great thing. One of our past presidents, Robert Myers, is here today. He heads up that program for us and the city staff come, and we work together and get those things done. So we look forward to working together with city staff and council and mayor going forward on all these issues. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wheatley. All right, that's all of the citizen comments we had scheduled or signed up. We will move to Agenda Item 4.1. This is approval of the minutes from the June 29, 2022 special city council meeting with LITA, July 26 regular city council meeting, the August 1 budget work session, the August 2 Citizens Advisory Committee Report and Budget Session. If I can have a motion to approve said minutes? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes under 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. All right, approval of minutes carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 5, which is a zone case public hearings. As stated earlier, the Agenda Item 5.2 has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not address 5.2. As we've done in the recent past, the plan is to open up the public hearings for 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5, and then if we have any questions, we can pull those out, but if none, then we will collectively pull those in for one consolidated hearing and vote. All right. So at this time, we will, without objection from council, we will conduct one public hearing for those items. Council, you have the staff report from planning and information from Planning, Zoning Commission in your agenda packet, which I know you've reviewed. So at this time, we will open up 5.1. If there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 5.1, you may come forward now. All right, seeing none, then we will move to those wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 5.1. You may come forward. All right, we will then move to Agenda Item 5.3 and open that up for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 5.3. All right, seeing none, we will move to anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 5.4. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 5.4, please come forward. All right, seeing none, if anyone is here to speak in favor of Agenda Item 5.4, please come forward. All right, seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 5.5, please Anyone here to speak in favor of Agenda Item 5.5, please step forward. All right, the public hearing for Agenda Items 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5 is now closed. Is there a motion to approve those Agenda items?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on Agenda Items 5.1, 3, 4, and 5? Ms. Joy.
5.4, could we pull that out separately, please?
Okay, we'll pull Agenda Item 5.4. Any other discussion on 5.1, 3, or 5.5? All right, could I have a motion to approve 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5? All in favor of approval of Agenda Items 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. All right, 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5 carries 7-0. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.4?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Joy, you wish discussion on Agenda Item 5.4?
Is there anyone here on Item 5.4, which is a request of Delta Land Surveying for an M1 district on Frankfurt Avenue? This one is a bit problematic. I don't know if planning has any information you can put on the screen.
Ms. Sager.
Because this is at 13413 Frankfurt Avenue, and it's an area that got caught in an annexation that was done where there were 212 agreements done, and so it's kind of a patchwork. And it's in an area where there is, I don't know, there's existing M1 at this time. Ms. Sager, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. There is no existing M1 in this area. There's some restricted local retail districts, C2A to the southwest, and some C3 to the north along Frankfurt Avenue. This was annexed in 2016 as part of an involuntary annexation that the city completed. The properties on this aerial view in purple are still outside the city limits. They have the 212 development agreements. The applicant intends to construct a new warehouse on this property, and it is manufacturing and warehouse building. And since it is zone transition, and this is a new use on the property, they need the proper zoning.
Thank you for that. I just, M1 entails a lot of uses that are not, you might not want near you. And so I have a problem. I don't know where the applicant is. We've tried to tell applicants that they need to be here when we have questions for them. It's not planning's responsibility to carry their flag, and I can't vote for it. It's an M1 in an area that, at this point in time, I don't know how it's going to develop. But if you get one M1, you may get two M1s because somebody says, well, you've already got an M1. Don't want to start that. So unless they can come forward and convince me, which they are not, I cannot support this M1 in this location.
Planning staff did contact all of the applicants on Friday. We sent them a copy of the agenda, reminded them 2 o'clock, and that they needed to be here, so.
And once again, planning is going the extra mile to make sure that people show up, and I appreciate that, but it's not their job really to do that. So I'm done.
Dr. Wilson?
Ms. Sager, did y'all, sorry, I'm trying to catch you. Staff recommended approval of this.
We did.
Okay, and so you feel that M1 out here in this area is suitable to this area and is like-minded with what's out in this area currently?
We do. You're on Frankfurt, which is a thoroughfare, and given what is existing, you know, there are a lot of existing businesses. You have a few homes out here that were obviously built probably within the county, but given the existing area, the fact that it's on the corner of a thoroughfare, we felt like it was appropriate.
And there was no opposition even from the people that are not annexed in that live near this area?
We received one letter in opposition from the property immediately south. They were concerned that it would create an increase in traffic and trash. They had other concerns regarding, you know, we had had a really dry summer already, so fire danger from the trash around the property, but that was the only response in opposition. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I think Mr. McBraer was before mine.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. McBraer, floor.
Can you give me an idea of what they plan to be manufacturing? I mean, a shade system, will they be storing a lot of materials on the site? Is it fenced? Can you?
It's not, I don't believe it's fenced. There is an existing strip center on the property already, and the applicant indicated that his business, the Beat the Heat Shading Systems, is already operating out of one of those retail spaces. This new expansion and addition will be to, for the manufacturing of those shade systems. But that's about my extent to my knowledge.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. My question is, would you, for the purpose of having that information, give a list of some of the other types of businesses that can go and fall up under this zone? Because you know, once you zone it, even if they decide not to, if it's zoned, that someone else can come along and, any of the things that are on that list.
Mm-hmm. It's going to be really random, the ones I can think of off the top of my head.
That's fine, just give us an idea.
M1, of course, is light manufacturing. So in addition to light manufacturing uses like candle manufacturing, potentially food manufacturing, clothing manufacturing, it also allows all of your commercial uses. So nightclub, bars, lounge, retail, grocery store, it's just those heavier warehouse, industrial-type manufacturing uses.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Sager, what was the vote and the recommendation from planning and zoning?
I believe it was unanimous for approval.
Thank you. Ms. Joy?
A meeting where there were six.
Six, yes.
People.
Out of nine.
Out of nine.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other zoning classification that they would fit into that would not be as onerous as M1?
Not under our current code.
But are they currently manufacturing their shades at the location where they are now?
The applicant at the meeting indicated they were, which if that had been the case prior to annexation and had continued since annexation, then that's a nonconforming use that can continue.
Okay. I just really worry, ultimately, these real 212 agreements are going, well, they're doing it now, as these properties are being developed. We're going to have more zone cases. I just don't want to, and I guess that's one of the dangers of doing a 212 agreement, is you don't have any control over what might be there.
Mr. McBraer?
So if they're allowed to continue the current use, grandfathered, so to speak, I guess is a nonconforming use, will they be allowed to continue that even without the zone change? Why are they requesting the zone change?
For the expansion. They want to construct.
So they cannot expand without the?
Correct.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
All right, any other questions of Ms. Sager? All right, any further discussion on Agenda Item 5.4? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 5.4, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign?
No.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Thank you, ma'am. We have Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.28. There were no pulls from the consent agenda, so seeing that there were no pulls from council, I would entertain a motion to approve Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.28. All right, a motion, Ms. Martinez-Garcia? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McBraer. All in favor of approval of Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.28, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right, next we will move to Agenda Item 7.1. This is to consider the appointments, to the Appointments Advisory Board, the Building Board of Appeals, the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Board of Directors, the Central Business District Tax, Income, Financing, Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors, the Citizens Traffic Commission, Civic Lubbock Board of Directors, the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission Permit and Licenseing Appeal Board, Star Care Board of Trustees, Veterans Advisory Committee, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. With approval of council, the intention here is for us to read in the district requirements, the recommendation, the member info, and the recommendation to either reappoint or name another member. So we'll start off with the Appointments Advisory Board. We currently have from District 5 Rep. Kathleen Burrell, recommendation to reappoint, and District 1 Rep. Samuel Gonzalez, the recommendation is to place Ruby Gonzalez, retired educator, to that position. District 5 Rep. Margaret Kelly, recommendation to reappoint, and District 2 Rep. Karen Mitchell, the recommendation to reappoint, and the mayor's representative is to replace Eric Pierce with Keith Patrick. Any questions on the Appointments Advisory Board?
Was the appointment for District 1 done with consent of the District 1 rep? Because this is showing that Ms. Gonzalez is a District 6 person.
Ms. Gonzalez is a District 6 resident, but very engaged and involved in District 1, so I have confidence that she will be able to make good recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other questions on the Appointments Advisory Board? All right, moving on to the Building Board of Appeals. Mr. Christopher Koch, the recommendation was he be replaced with CJ Marquette from District 5. We have Stephen Devonport with the recommendation that he be replaced by Manny Flores from District 1. Recommendation for the architect position, Zachary Garth be replaced by Christina Weir from District 5. That Mr. Jacob Kirkland in the commercial contractor position be reappointed. That Brian Nguyen in the electrician position be replaced by Ricky Lawrence from District Any questions on the Building Board of Appeals? All right, thank you. The next item is, next board is Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Board of Directors, otherwise known as Cremo. We have Jay House from District 4, and a recommendation that he be reappointed to that position. Any discussion on Cremo? All right, next we will have the Central Business District Tax, Increase, Financing, Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors. We have member, current member from District 4, David Alderson, recommendation that he be replaced by Jeremy Hamilton from District 3. Any questions on that board? All right, next we will move to the Citizens Traffic Commission. We currently have Cassandra Camargo, and a recommendation that she be replaced by District 6 Member Jody Slaughter. We have Catherine Emery from District 1 with a recommendation that she be replaced by Christina Gonzalez from District 1. And we have Skylar Sheridan, and a recommendation that Mr. Sheridan be reappointed to that position. Any questions on Citizens Traffic Commission? All right, we will next move to Civic Lubbock Board of Directors. We have Lindley Herring from District 6, and a recommendation that she be reappointed. We have Lindley Herring from District 6 and a recommendation that she be reappointed. We have Rafael Gutierrez from District 1 with a recommendation that he be replaced by Roger Carr from District 4. We have Kendra Lansdale from District 6 with a recommendation that she be replaced by Beverly Beth from District 4. And the Honorable Stephanie Massengill, the boss of the family, be replaced by Emily Wilkinson from District 4. Any questions?
You can try to replace her, but it's difficult.
Mr. McBraer?
Yeah, my concern with these appointments are that they are, they're reappointments, or I mean replacements, and they're all from District 4. I believe District 3 is underrepresented on that committee, as it is on many committees in this city. So I have a problem with that, and I don't think I can be voting to approve this.
Separate vote on that.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I also believe that we are low on District 1 representatives, working on it, but considering these individuals and knowing their commitment to the community and their skill that they bring to the table, I would not be opposed to appointing them.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other questions, comments on Civic Lubbock Inc. Board of Directors? Well, since we're on that one, let's go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the Civic Lubbock Inc. Board of Directors to the reappointment of Lindley Herring, the appointment of Roger Carr, Beverly Macbeth, and Emily Wilkinson?
No, to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of those appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
No.
All right, motion carries 6 to 1 to the Civic Lubbock Inc. Board of Directors. All right, we'll next move on to the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission. Currently, we have Citizen Catherine Drury of District 5. We have a request to appoint Rusty Smith from District 5. We have Jay House from District 4 with a recommendation to reappoint him. We have a represent, Representative of the Water Organization Carmen McCain to be replaced by Theodore Cleveland from District 3. Any questions on that? Okay, next, moving to Permit and License Appeal Board, we have from Law Enforcement, Patrick Kelly with a recommendation to reappoint, and Transportation Karen Mitchell with a recommendation to reappoint. Any questions on Permit and License Appeal? All right, next, we'll move to Star Care Board of Trustees. We have William Carter, a motion to, a recommendation to reappoint, Robert Kazee with the recommendation to reappoint, and Brian Shannon with the recommendation to reappoint. Any questions on Star Care? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that the chairman of the Star Care Board is here. Judge Farmer, could I get you to come up for just a minute? I've always been on the other side of this with her at the courthouse, so it's kinda nice. The Star Care Board does a great job.
Thank you.
A little bit of concern about the fact that you all have no term limits, and you do have members who have been on your board since the 90s. So when we make these appointments, we look at, at all of these things, and we've been inundated with letters, emails about appointments to this board, which is every citizen's right to do that. But I'm not opposed to reappointing this, this year. This year, the City of Lubbock has three appointments. Next year, we have none, and I think the following year, we may only have one. But I would certainly suggest that you begin to look at your board in terms of continuity and who's going to be there. God forbid that something should happen to Professor Shannon, but it, it will at some time to all of us. And so just a cautionary word, look at your board and think about new people. I don't think your board, the people on it are the only people in Lubbock who care for the issues that we deal with in mental health. So I would appreciate that you, you guys look at that.
Absolutely, and we would love to work with the city on the very next appointment. And I do want people to know that we have two brand-new members that we appointed just over the last year because of losses of, of other people. And we do want to have a board that is reflective of the citizens of the community. I certainly understand about the length of the time of some of the people we've had in the past, people that have served even longer than that. But we're certainly not opposed to looking at new blood at all, and we would love to work with the city to accomplish that goal.
Who are the, the two newest members, I assume, appointed by one of the other entities?
Yes, one was from UMC, Brian.
He's from Covenant.
From Covenant, right.
And then Ms. T. Arena is actually married to a police officer here, and so they're
brand-new on our, our board and just starting to, to get their feet wet.
Okay, good, thank you.
But they're gonna be excellent board members, I think.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I appreciate everyone's consideration and on this very important matter to us at least. We've got some really big projects coming up and, and are really looking forward to working with the city and want to really improve any relationship that we can. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Ms. Martinez-Garcia, you have a comment?
Comment, and once again, we appreciate subject matter expertise. I think it's very important when you have an organization that works with this type of detail. But in comments to Ms. Joy, I think that the council agrees that moving forward, we have to be conscious of that. We always have to have, make sure that we're engaging a variety of folks and, and always preparing and being proactive for future leadership. So I appreciate you guys, and just something to keep in mind as we continue and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, without further discussion on Star Care, we'll move to the Veterans Advisory Committee. We have Daniel Bays from District 6 and a recommendation he be replaced by Jeremy Sedano from District 2. Any questions on that appointment? All right, and then finally, Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have Rebecca Postar with the recommendation that she be, that Christopher Koch be appointed to the ZBA. Any questions on that appointment? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve all of these previously espoused spoken names that I'm sure Ms. Garza has written down diligently, and exclusive of the vote on the Civic Lubbock Board.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the before-read appointments that have been read into the record, save the appointments for Civic Lubbock Inc.
Zach, again.
A motion and a second. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, next, we will take Items 7.2, 3, and 4. This is board appointments, 7.2 to Bell Farms Pid, 7.3 Quincy Park Pid, and appointments to the North Point Pid Advisory, these are all advisory boards. The appointment under 7.2, I think the parties with the most votes from those respective Pids was on, 7.2 was Tracy Moore and Robert Bayasteros for the Bell Farms Advisory Board. Under 7.3 was, I guess, Eden Shelton, Donnie Carrasco, and Charlotte McCarty, and that was to the North Point, or the Quincy Park? Excuse me, that's North Point. So that will be Agenda Item 6.4. And then Eric Pierce, Paul Shuey, and Nathan King to the Quincy Park Pid Advisory Board. Any questions or comments on those names or those motions to appoint? Mr. Massengill?
Motion.
Mr. McBraer, did you have a comment?
Comment.
All right.
Just in my ongoing attempt to keep from using acronyms, you might just explain what a PID is.
Right. Yeah, it's, consider appointments to the Bell Farms Public Improvement District, and that would be the PID for all of those.
I know what the PID is, but... Plain enough for everybody else would be the, my concern.
Mr. Atkinson?
The floor is yours. Hit a red light. There we go, now I have a red light. Thanks. Public Improvement District, you will find them, in our case, predominantly in residential areas. It is put in place by the initial property, excuse me, initial property owners, and a public improvement district provides improvements, think small parks, boulevarded areas, additional landscaping, that's in the public right-of-way and is publicly accessible. In exchange for that, the property owners in that area pay an additional assessment. It comes in with their property tax bill, it's not legally a tax, but it is collected in that manner. Those dollars, so if we use Bell Farms, those assessments collected in Bell Farms can only be spent on the improvements in Bell Farms. Each of the public improvement districts has an advisory board composed of owners of property in that area, and as you'll see later in tonight's agenda, they actually then also formulate and recommend both the budget and the assessment amount back to this body for approval.
Any other questions, Mr. McBraer?
That answered it, thank you.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Massengill, and do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of these appointments to these various PID advisory boards, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4 carry 7-0. All right, next, we will move to Agenda Item 7.5. This is a motion to consider and take action on the appointments of the chairperson and vice-chairperson for the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission. Understanding is Mr. House had been, previously been the chairperson, and I think he's out of term on that. So we have a, a request to appoint Melanie Barnes as the chair and Celeste Haney as vice-chair of the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission. Can I entertain a motion? Thank you. A motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Melanie Barnes as chair and Celeste Haney to the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission as chair and vice-chair respectively, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, Agenda Item 7.6 is a read-only declaration of two appointments by the mayor to the Lubbock Housing Authority Board of Commissions. Those names are?
Ida Chapa.
Ida Chapa and Amanda Gray. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I declare Ida Chapa and Amanda Gray as the mayor's appointments to the Lubbock Housing Authority Board of Directors.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, next, we'll move to Items 7.7 through 7.12. These are the 2022 assessments for the rates for the North Overton Public District, Public Improvement District, the assessment for the North Point Public Improvement District, Quincy Park, the rate for Valencia and Bell Farms, as well as the assessment for the Upland Crossing Public Improvement. And these are public hearings for Items 7.7 through 7.12. This is a public hearing to consider it an ordinance to levy the 2022 assessment rate for those multiple Pids. Again, being North Overton, North Point, Quincy Park, Valencia, Bell Farms, and Upland I believe we have a short presentation on this. Mr. Atkinson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to reintroduce Ms. Cheryl Brock. We had her during the budget workshops, and she said quietly, Cheryl and her team, in addition to doing the city budget, they oversee the process through the aforementioned boards, the budget preparation, the assessments to support it. Cheryl's gonna take us quickly through part of the item we've already discussed, and then show you each of these Pids in order and take questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna give you just a little short overview of public improvement districts, because I was aware that several of you probably have not dealt with them before, so I wanted to give you a little bit more information. Public Improvement District is a defined assessment area by the city in response to property owner petitions. It allows for enhanced improvements and enhanced maintenance of a specific area. In other words, if they want something special, if they have the money in their fund, they can pay for that, and then they would maintain it afterwards. PID creation process, usually a group of affected owners submit a petition to the city. That petition has to meet two conditions. One is more than 50% of the taxable real, owners of more than 50% of taxable real property, and it has to be one of the other two, which is more than 50% of the number of property owners, or owners representing more than 50% of the surface area. And they have to meet two of those. They have to meet the first one, and they have to meet one of the second, the two. Pids may be dissolved by the same method as they are created. Pids fund, there's a multitude of things in the law that allows them, that they are allowed to fund. These are some of the most, the ones we use the most, landscaping, maintenance of public improvements, fountains, distinctive lighting and signs, improving, widening, rerouting streets and sidewalks, pedestrian malls, off-street parking, and the establishment and improvement and maintenance of parks. All the other items are included in Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code under 003. There's a whole long list of items, I didn't think you'd wanna see all of them. PID assessment is not a tax, I get that question a lot. It's an assessment over and above the taxes paid on the property, and it goes into a separate PID fund, and it's only used for the benefit of the PID. The public improvement district boards do review and set and recommend the service and assessment plan to the city council. The service and assessment plan is what controls what the money is spent for. Generally, the assessment is based on property values and expenses that they intend to incur for the next year, and they have to be in that service plan in order for the money to be spent, they have to be included in that service plan. The beginning service plan is generally drafted with input from property owners, and then it's reviewed annually with the property owners, and council also has to review and approve it. The assessment in all but one of our Pids is based on so much per hundred-dollar value. The only one that is different is vintage township, and it's a lot, it's a, it's a little bit more complicated. The council must review and adopt the new service and assessment plans and set the assessment rate after the public hearing. PID funds can only be used in the public and just, of public improvement district for expenses included in the service and assessment plan. They're usually used for, they're used for services over and above what the city normally provides. In other words, if they wanna have a median in their entryway, then they would be expected to maintain that median. Different assessment levels may be established depending on benefit in a PID. We do, we do create a separate PID fund for each individual PID, we have to keep it segregated. City of Lubbock responsibilities, we have to review and, and review the service and assessment plan annually. We adopt an ordinance setting the assessment rate. We contract with Lubbock Central Appraisal District to collect those for us, they're, they're actually set up to do that better than the city is. they're actually set up to do that better than the city is. Coordinate annual Pid role review and distribution of public notices and communications to the property owners. We do pay the expenses for the Pid out of the Pid Assessment Fund, and we do manage annual contracts for maintenance, repair, and construction services. The day-to-day operations of Pids are actually managed by Brianna Girardi in Business Development. The first one I want to talk to you about is North Overton. It's actually the very first one we created, it was created in 2003. This is a map of the area. I wasn't sure if y'all were familiar with them, so I included a map of them for you. The assessment proposed for 2022 is 18 cents, it's exactly the same as it was for this current year. The assessment per, on a hundred thousand dollar home is a hundred and eighty dollars. Maintenance of the public improvements in the right-of-way is the main expense, that and repairs in Overton because we have a lot of landscaping, I'm sure you've noticed, it's a little more extreme than in most places. It also replaces the lights, the furniture, you know, anything in the right-of-way. Electric cost of pedestrian lighting in Overton is actually paid by the Public Improvement District. Water cost for irrigation in the right-of-way, trash pickup and emptying of the trash receptacles, and the color that they place in the beds, seasonal color in all of the beds on Glen The second one is North Point, it's located, this is the location, it's basically off Quaker Avenue and Erskine. All right, I think here, sorry. The assessment for North Point is 14 cents per hundred-dollar valuation is what's recommended for next year. It's exactly the same as the current year, we really are not raising any, changing any of the assessment rates. Assessment on a hundred thousand dollar home is a hundred and forty dollars. They are also maintaining landscaping in the right-of-way, lighting, entry signs, replacement, they actually have two or three wells, Brianna, three? Three wells in North Point? Yeah, they have three wells in North Point that they maintain, also pay the electric on. Christmas lighting in the median and construction of public improvement districts, they have a walking track that was actually constructed by the property owners. Quincy Park is the next one, and this is the area that Quincy Park is in. They're probably the only one that's square. It's off of Quincy Avenue, 98th Street, and Upland. It's, it's, it was actually created, I want to say that one was created probably somewhere around, let me see, 2009. Whoops, sorry. The assessment in Quincy Park is 15 cents per hundred-dollar valuation, that's the recommendation for next year, it's also the, the rate for this year. They also, most of these are maintaining or building public improvements. For the most part, Quincy Park has a park, they also have an entryway that's maintained. Valencia is the next one, and it's actually in this area, it's, Valencia's the smallest Pid that we have. It's actually only has a little over 100 tracks. Valencia's assessment proposed for 2022 is 18 cents, it's exactly the same as the current year. The assessment on a hundred thousand dollar home is a hundred and eighty dollars, and they are maintenance of parking entryways, repair and replacement of public improvements, and they construct some as well, they also have a park. Bell Farms is one of the newer ones, it's also the largest Pid that we have. So far, it's got somewhere around 1,700 tracks in it, and that's, I don't think all the property is completely subdivided yet. But anyway, this is the location, it's basically off of 1585 between Avenue P and University. The assessment for Bell Farms is 12 cents per hundred-dollar valuation proposed for next year, it's also the same as what it is now. Assessment on a hundred thousand dollar homes, 120. And they actually have five, or will have five parks, they haven't gotten them all done, has they, Brianna? They have gotten them all done?
No.
No, so they have actually five parks, repair, replacement of public improvements, electric cost of lighting and irrigation, and construction of public improvements. They won't, the Pid won't build the parks, but they will maintain all of them. And how, Upland Crossing is the, well, we actually have two more besides the one we're going to speak of today, but we just created those like late '21, and we set the assessments for '22, so we do not have to set those. Upland Crossing is the last one we're going to talk about, and it's basically, it was created actually fairly, it's a fairly new one. The development on it is not, has, is occurring right now. Assessment for next year is 15 cents per hundred-dollar valuation, the current one is also 15 cents, and the assessment on a hundred thousand dollar home is 150 dollars. This one, we are going to be maintaining public improvements in the right-of-way, including one Playa Lake Park, one Parkett Park, landscaping, hardscape, lighting, fencing, and the normal things with public improvements, repair and replacement of public improvements, electric costs, and irrigation, construction of public improvements. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them, sorry, there's a lot of them these days.
That was great, Ms. Brock, thank you for that. Any questions, Ms. Joy?
The North Overton Pid...
Yes, ma'am.
It was begun in 2003, so we're up to 19 years.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the age of a Pid? Does it go on indefinitely, or does it have a termination?
They, they really don't have end dates unless you set one originally, none of our Pids have an end date. They can be dissolved with the, through the same process as the creation, but in North Overton, all North Overton pretty much does is maintain all that public improvements in the right-of-way, all the landscaping, lights, all that stuff. But no, it does not have an end date.
Okay, is there any debt still in North Overton?
There is in the TIF, there is not in the Pid.
Okay, all right.
The Pid, North Overton TIF built the improvements in, in North Overton, the Pid maintains those improvements.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Ms. Brock? All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, this time, we'll open up the public hearing for any of those wishing to speak in opposition of any of the agenda items 7.7 through 7.12. All right, seeing none, any of those wishing to speak in favor of the proposed Pid assessments for items 7.7 through 7.12? All right, we'll close the public hearing for Agenda Items 7.7 through 7.12, and I'll call for a motion to approve the ordinance to levy 2022 assessments, assessment rates for North Overton, North Point, Quincy Park, Valencia, Bell Farms, and Upland Crossing Public Improvement Districts. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any further discussion on these motion, this motion and these Pids? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Motion carries seven zero. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 7.13. Back again to consider this ordinance, a request of Home Depot for a zone change. I believe we had some other information, Dr. Wilson, some other information that came to us this afternoon, did you have a motion on this?
Yes, Mark, are you okay if I'm, okay. So this was in Mark's district, so we were discussing who was going to do this, but we would like to move to postpone 7.13 for a month out to September 27th meeting, still due to some compliance issues, and we encourage our staff to continue working with our Home Depot and their store manager to make sure we bring those into compliance.
All right, motion to postpone Agenda Item 7.13 to regularly schedule the city council meeting on September 27th. That's a motion. Mr. McBrayer has a second. Any further discussion or questions on 7.13?
I have some discussion.
All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I would just like to encourage that if we have issues that we're seeing, that maybe we walk through, meet with, with the group that we're discussing, and walk them through and point them out specifically. I don't think it would hurt for us to do that, I think if anything, it would always give us an idea to be proactive in the future with other businesses.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Ms. Joy? Dr. Wilson, just have your button. All right, all in favor of postponing Agenda Item 7.13 to September 27th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Our motion to postpone carries seven zero. All right, next, we have Agenda Item 7.14, to consider a semi-annual report of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee and recommendations therein. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. You may remember that once the process was undertaken, that implemented impact fees, we heard it talked about earlier today, that did go into effect at the end of May is when the required layout period was over. But as this goes forward through time, you do have your Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, it's a statutorily required board, it's appointed by the city council, representation on the board by trade sector is defined in the statute as well. That group continues to meet, and they are obligated to bring to you update reports. So what you have now is the semi-annual report, so covering the most recent six months. We're going to ask Mr. Mike Keenum, city engineer, and I believe our chair of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, Mr. Thomas Payne, is here as well.
Mr. Keenum?
As Mr. Atkinson said, this is a required semi-annual report from the committee. You have a resolution before you, and some of the language that says that you will accept the report and the recommendations therein, that does not mean that you are taking any action on anything, you're simply accepting what they are presenting to you. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Thomas Payne to make any remarks wherever he went. Oh, there he is, you were hiding.
The original T. Payne.
That's real, real, not original, Mayor. My name is Thomas Payne, I am chairman of your SEAT Committee. So we are submitting, as required by law, the every-six-month report from the committee to the council. The report, I believe, speaks for itself in terms of the numbers in the report. Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to suggest that we postpone any real discussion of the report to a later date. At our most recent meeting, there were issues we were not able to discuss or chose not to pending completion of the city budget. I think the committee will be able to have a more robust discussion after the budget is completed, and the council and new members of the council will have more time to familiarize themselves with the subjects. I'd be happy to come back at any date in the future at the request of the council to pick up that discussion after we've completed that process.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. And I think just as a point, emphasis to Mr. Keenum's statement, the resolution does say specifically that the recommendations there are hereby accepted by the city council. I think we've discussed that, that will be received by the city council, and so we're all on the same page, that we're simply receiving a report. This will be ongoing according to the statute, and we'll be back at some point in the future to further discuss and get more information. Do we have any other questions of Mr. Keenum, Mr. Payne, or Mr. Atkinson? All right, this time, I'd entertain a motion on the resolution of Agenda Item 7.14.
Move to, yeah, move to accept and receive the semi-annual report of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee and the recommendations therein.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Second by Mr. Massengill, I believe. All in favor of that receipt, please say aye. Any opposed, by like sign? All right, motion carries seven zero. All right, it's 3:20 on July, excuse me, August the 23rd of 2022, and we are adjourned.